Mike's on.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the school board meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowles, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, there are two adjustments that I'd like to make. First, I'd like to add discussion and consideration of teacher nomination to item I three. Remove I four, first read, and add acknowledgement of donation to Hancock County Technical Center to item I seven B.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second. Beth?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item D, approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four regular school board meeting and the minutes of the February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four special school board meeting as presented.
Any discussion? None? All those in favor? Thank you. Item E, correspondence and communications.
I will pass around three letters. The first is from Vivian Tomo announcing her retirement, as well as Bonnie Hardy. And then a letter from Gary Burgess expressing his change of retirement date that he had originally made. So I'll pass those around. Thank you.
Item F, administrative reports. Nikki, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to have all you guys here. I'm so excited. I'm Nikki Tam, the Assistant Superintendent, and you have my report. It's lengthy. We've been busy. We never stop in my department. And so the first thing I wanted to chat with you about is our empowering Ellsworth Educators Advisory Team. This is a team that we have mentioned a few times throughout the year, but it started with the old-fashioned curriculum instruction and assessment team that most all districts have. We've had here in the past. But we wanted to do a revamp. Amy and I thought it was important to have a team of teacher leaders and more. But really revamp what that looks like in our district and provide an avenue for a variety of staff and stakeholders to have a voice in our advancement as a district. So we've been meeting once a month, and I just, I wanted to put that team in my report this month because it is a very engaging group that is extremely refreshing to work with. We have about thirty people on that committee, which is a very large group. We meet in the AP room. We kick out some athletic teams once in a while, once a month. And we sit in a circle every time because, again, it's a team, it's a group where we all share. There's not anybody looking towards the front and leading. We're all leading circular together. Throughout the work that we've done this year, we've talked about some ideals, the ideals that we would like our students to leave with as they graduate, but also the type of adults that we want them to be. So we started there. But then we moved on into some specific things, such as curriculum and instruction pieces, but also more than that, including behavior practices, support for teachers, morale, all kinds of things. And I keep mentioning the word teachers, but we have a variety of stakeholders. We have an ed tech on our team. We have a member of IT. We have administration. We have representatives from every school. It's a really well-rounded group. So one of the things that we have decided recently that a focus of improvement for the rest of this school year is really going to be a focus on literacy practices and professional learning through the lens of PLCs. As you know, we get out Friday afternoons, and the staff on that group really want to make sure that we are maximizing the use of that time. So they've really taken their voice and allowed their thoughts to begin immediately to improve our district. So that moves on into our next topic, which is really focusing on literacy practices. We've actually started work, heavy work, on literacy practices in our district, starting back in the summer and have reported that to some of you, right? You know, when we started this year, talking about the summer professional learning that we did with K-12 ELA and really identifying the focus standards that we have across our district, utilizing the new standards that were adopted under the legislation. We are also, you know, last time, we had a community member talk to us about the science of reading and just really encouraging us to kind of go in that direction and not just go in that direction, but continue with some of the discussions that we've been having and really talk about improving literacy in our district from K to eight and really in the high school level. As you can imagine, there's a huge focus that needs to be at early elementary. And one of the things that we're working on currently is looking at and reviewing a variety of programs, which most people call curriculum, you know, something that we buy to utilize so that we can all get on the same page with our instruction and not necessarily just get on the same page per grade level, but make sure the progression of learning from K to eight and beyond is really tight. So we want to make sure that we have teacher voice and choice in that process. So right now, for a variety of Fridays and foreseeable Fridays, we are really digging through a variety of programs. There's physical materials. There's more physical materials on the way. Our teachers are utilizing templates and spreadsheets where they're looking at the materials in front of them and online and really reviewing them with evidence-based practices in mind. So with the science of reading, there are a variety of things that, or shifts, that need to be happening in our classroom, specifically moving back to a strong focus on phonics, phonemic awareness, decoding, all those parts of reading, instruction, and speech that, we talked about this yesterday in one of our committee meetings, but, you know, when I was young, right? Hooked on phonics worked for me. And then the pendulum over the years has shifted to more of a whole approach to reading and just kind of taking the clues that you see on a page and understanding maybe that a word starts with an S and we know what that sound is and to kind of make some guesses. The pendulum now has really switched back to whole, you know, instruction where we're sounding out words. We're tapping out syllables and other pieces. So we're having rich discussions about what reading and writing look like in our district and in our school. And that is refreshing, and it's really refreshing to be able to have everybody be a part of it. All of the teachers are a part of it. Our interventionists are a part of it. Our MTSS coordinators are part of it. Even our IT directors are part of it, right? Because there is, there's online aspects to everything, getting teachers access to their accounts and things like that. So we are actively in a search process to make some full sweep adoptions for our district and that, monies have been earmarked for that in the budget as well. So you'll see a proposal come to the Curriculum Committee sometime in the coming months and then to the full board likely after that. To finish out the conversation on the ELA work, I wanted to just note that you included in your packet our formalized documents that have been developed via the district teams of ELA teachers to identify the, what we call the non-negotiables of teaching and learning in the ELA content area across our district. So these documents were kind of giving to you to, you know, browse through for the next month, and we would like to have you formally adopt them at our next meeting. The standards that you see in those documents are divvied up per grade level or grade band. And really what those items are, again, are the non-negotiables. We want students to be able to do these things in first grade. And if they can and when they do, we know they're prepared for second grade. And if they do the next column, they're prepared for the next year. We have to have documents like this, number one, because it gets everybody on the same page and it doesn't matter who you have for a teacher, whether they're a new teacher or a veteran teacher. But it also creates a laser focus on the most important parts of instruction in reading and writing across our district. These come from the main learning results, but the main learning results is a large document of a variety of standards. And to be honest, it is very hard for teachers to be able to focus on all of that. We do teach all of those things and we touch upon those things. But as you know, in schools, there is a lot more than just teaching reading or teaching writing or teaching math. And so what we need to have is a way to really identify the heavy hitters, the gold stars, you know, the non-negotiables. And that's what we've done in this document. It doesn't mean some of the other skills that are legislated are not important. Again, we do, we do teach through them, but we're not assessing them multiple times. We're not continuing to hit on those things because if we can really do these things on the documents that have been provided to you, we feel that we will be extremely successful. And so we want to focus on those. And then obviously, over time and with continuous adoptions from the legislation of new sets of standards, we would review that and edit it as needed. So have a look at that over the next month and then let me know if you happen to have any questions. At EEMS, we've also been talking about, a lot about interventions and how we provide supports at what we call Tier Two to all students in reading and in math and in writing. We have, as you can imagine, because of COVID and many other things, instructional practices, changeover in teachers, schools have this all across the board. They have a lot of students who need extra support. We and every school district that I know have more students who need support than interventionists. It's a really big problem because students are significantly needing a lot of support in schools these days. So one thing that we've been talking a lot about, though, is making sure that the services that we provide via our interventionists are equitable. So right now, generally, our model is that we serve early elementary literacy practices. We do have one math interventionist for EEMS and one for EHS, but those positions currently are grant-funded under COVID funds. So those will, that funding drops off in September this year. So those staff cannot be funded through the COVID grant further. Obviously, those positions are needed, and we do need to serve students in math K eight along with literacy in K eight. And so, again, we've been engaging with that whole team to really define and decide, help them. They're the experts, to figure out how we can serve all students and who we have on the team and how we can make sure that we provide the most students possible with the interventions and services that we can give. And so I just want to give out a shout out to that team as well because it's not easy, number one, when you talk about a variety of people who are grant-funded, including a lot of the literacy people. They're funded in, with the Eser money, or ESEA money, not ESSR. So they work very hard and they're appreciated for what they do every day with students, but also for kind of thinking out of the box and really trying to make sure that we have a good solution for next year and beyond to serve students with interventions in math and in ELA. And then finally, the last big piece that's been a strong focus is the budget work. And I mentioned it last time, but Katie Hallenbach from IT and I have been working collaboratively along with the principals to identify more of a district-wide route and lens for budgeting. This has made us, I do believe it's fiscally more responsible, but also it makes sure that programming and supplies, et cetera, are really equitable across all classrooms. And in doing that, we're making sure that we're not missing things by accident or we have programming that is vertically aligned. We have, we can often bundle and purchase licenses in a better way at a group discount or grade level discount or school district discount rather than, for example, having the kindergarten teachers kind of budget for something and April's putting it in and then middle school's doing something and another secretary's putting it in and then the high school's doing something and they're putting it in up there. So just trying to really centralize the, not just the ordering, but the planning and purchasing for budgets. So that's been a huge lift. But the collaboration is appreciated and it shouldn't be as much of a list lift moving forward now that we kind of have it all under control. And ordering as well will be much easier. We'll just, you know, once we hopefully pass a budget, we can pull the trigger on ordering really mass amounts of things for all teachers rather than having a variety of small orders or small internet purchases or subscriptions coming through here and there, which makes it very hard to keep track of what we're doing and who we're giving those licenses to, et cetera. And that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
You sure?
We've, you know, slept a little bit, had a few days off, but it's been, it's been a great month. We've gotten a lot accomplished.
Thanks, Nikki. Does anyone have any questions?
That was a lot. Wow. Looking forward to reviewing this material that you gave us and talking about next month.
Great. And we do have drafts of those for math as well that we've done, starting in November, professional learning. Those aren't quite finalized at the time, at the place to give to you yet, but we will be doing this with all eight content areas.
Okay.
Nikki, I don't want to, I, do you have any, how many interventionist or supports do we have from our grant funding that we need to figure out?
Yeah. It's a great question. And again, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about how we can creatively use all plots of funding and serve all students. So we're, right now, as I said, we do have two math interventionists in the COVID grant that is running out. We have two interventionists, which do generally do literacy, as well as an interventionist ed tech in the ESEA funding, the Title I funding. And we might have a little bit of wiggle room with that in the future, but generally, we kind of get the same allocation. And so we can, we have some rollover from year to year generally, but we don't always have enough to like put in another person. And then we have one locally funded right now, one locally funded person. And so ideally, just to say it, we're gonna, we really think we need to put those two math interventionists in the local budget, but we've been trying to have conversations about how to creatively do that, you know, maybe budget neutral or other ways. Because just to have basically three intervention, you know, two from the ESEA grant, one locally funded, and then one ed tech, that really is not enough people to serve even just EEMS. It's not. And so we've been working on percentages. You know, if we have this many people, who can we serve? What percent of the population is that? And they've been doing some really good work and thinking out of the box, which includes, at EEMS, because we are a Title I school-wide school, technically, all teachers are Title I teachers, like under the definition they are. So, you know, we've had conversations, you know, even like in the middle school right now, they have elective blocks or enrichment blocks. Maybe a teacher can have one of those blocks to do a reading group or a math intervention. Technically, they're interventionists. They're serving that many students, but, you know, it's not your traditional, let's just pull you out during, you know, at nine-thirty and come to the Title I room or the intervention room. So we're working on it, but yeah, so generally, we have five staff right now with one ed tech. So technically, six. And two are not going to be able to be funded with the current funding stream for next year.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowles, you're up.
Good evening. The first announcement I have is very exciting. We learned from the state that we did receive one of the school revolving renovation funds that we applied for. For those that don't know, this is a fund that comes through the Maine Municipal Bond Bank. It's a state and local partnership providing a portion of a project's funding. The fund provides loans to school departments to help finance project expenditures. And the amount that is awarded, a percentage is a grant from the state based on what you've received for state subsidy through the funding formula. And then the other part is a zero percent interest loan for about ten years. We are currently in process with the Maine Municipal Bond Bank, and our award amount from the state was for one point eight four four million dollars to help fund work at Hancock County Technical Center to include renovation of the elevator and to install a fire suppression system. Specifically for us, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is grant-funded that we will not have to pay back. And then the rest of the loan, the nine hundred and seven thousand dollars, will be the zero percent interest. So what is wonderful about that is that even though we are in talks to, hopefully someday, build a new Hancock County Technical Center, we still own that building. So the school department and the city agrees that we have a responsibility to get that building up to muster so that even if we build a new HCTC, that that building could be used or repurposed for another city or school department use, or it could be used as an asset to sell. So we're really excited that we were able to receive that loan. There were a ton of schools that were devastated. They did not get anything. So even though we put in four different applications and we were bummed, we only got one. When we looked at the grand totality of the list, we are really quite fortunate that we got close to two million dollars. So we are very proud of that. So I want to thank Frank, who worked on this with me, as well as Tom Seekins from EMC, who assisted us with this application. Coupled with that, a week later, the Department of Education dropped the next round of school construction funding applications. So we immediately assembled Bill Tracy, Director at HCTC, myself, and Frank Evansen, zoomed with Tyler Barter, who was the Oak Point Architect and Engineer who worked with us, that the city hired to do the rendering of a feasibility study for what a new Hancock County Technical Center might look like in Ellsworth. And we met and reviewed the new application and who's going to do what and how we're going to attack that. The application is due at the end of August. What is really hard about these construction applications is it takes forever. So the application will end up being probably several hundred pages by the time it's all said and done. It will be due in August and will require a vote of the Board of Support in July. And so we'll look to you to approve that. Then what will happen is all of next year, representatives from the Department of Education will do site visits to every school district that puts in an application. And then they will roll out, a year later, a list of where we fall. And they will announce how many of the projects they will fund. And then we'll go from there. In the meantime, the HCTC Building Committee is continuing to meet and try to have some work being done simultaneously to this application project. Because as we all know, even if we were to get funded, they don't always fund everything. So talking about how we could fundraise to help offset some of those costs and/or to be armed and ready. If we don't make the list, have some things in place so that we are still ready to go because I do believe everybody is very serious that it is time for us to construct a new Hancock County Technical Center. So we will continue working on that in the meantime. Also happening right now is strategic planning has met a couple of more times since our last board meeting. And really exciting work is being done. And basically, for the next four to eight weeks, I'll be going on the road and meeting with groups of staff across the district to do a strategic planning activity. As of right now, the Planning Committee has done the activity and Leadership Team has done the activity. And so pockets across the district of staff, all of our different staff members will have an opportunity to participate in this activity. And what comes from that activity will help us build the backbone of our new mission and vision and a new strategic plan for our district. And once we have our staff input on everything, we will then move to community and start working on community forums to get the community input on what they would like to see as part of our mission, vision, and strategic plan moving forward. I think it's important with budget time that we talk a little bit about the grant opportunities that continue to descend from the Department of Education. And this is like double-edged sword, okay? The state drops a lot of grant opportunities, and whenever it is appropriate, we will go after grant funding, okay, to help supplement our local budget. But what is happening right now is grants are continuing to drop and then staff attends webinars explaining the grants. And the Department of Ed says things like, this application will take a minimum of a hundred hours for your application to pass muster, and they're all being due around the same time. So we are really taking a hard look at appropriateness of the grant. Does it really help add value to the work we're already doing or add more to the plate? And if it does, then we're going to not do it. But if it supplements what we're doing, if it's value-added, if it supports work that's already being done, then we absolutely will go after it. So right now, there are four different grants. I forgot to put one on your sheet. The first is the literacy grant, which Nikki did speak to you about last month a little bit. That certainly supplements the work that we're doing right now in the area of ELA. That grant specifically was an allocation model, meaning that the state gives us what our amount is and we apply for how we will spend that specific amount. That we will apply for, and that is to the tune of about fifty-seven thousand dollars, and will help us provide really targeted training around ELA, which is exactly what staff is already working on and is asking for. There is also the ARP Summer Learning and Enrichment Grant. This grant is for about three million dollars statewide. That's a competitive grant. You apply for what you want to help supplement your summer learning. Title I summer grant is going to be coming too, and those are completely different grants and different models. There is also the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center Grant. That too is a competitively-grant process. That looks to have the school district partner with a community organization. Typically, school districts that get that grant offer after-school and/or summer enrichment programming. So we are looking into that to see what kind of capacity. That one's a heavy, heavy lift. And finally, we did receive the Workforce Shortage Grant. That was dropped and due like within a week. And with Amy Atherton's help, we were able to figure out who qualified for that. That gives our district about fifty thousand dollars and reimburses the district for coursework for teachers that are currently embedded in coursework in areas of emergency certification or conditional certification, of which we do have some. So it is going to provide some revenue into the district to reimburse us for staff taking coursework currently. And we had had no idea that that one was coming. So that was also welcome. I think it's important to talk about the Early Learning Collaborative. The Early Learning Collaborative continues to meet monthly. Our last meeting involved several school districts zooming in from around the state and talking about their different pre-K collaborations that they have. The focus of this group, again, is to look at solving a problem in Ellsworth, which, as we all know, is daycare and early learning opportunities for preschool students and really starting to understand what services is Ellsworth already providing for families and how can the school help provide? And how can the school help provide a much-needed service while not being in competition and taking away from the early learning centers that are already in existence? So we're looking to meet again in March. And of course, later, we'll talk about our goals in this next budget around this topic as well. Next, I wanted to talk to the board and the public about the latest CDS report that Governor Mills and the Department of Education has come out. For those that don't know, Governor Mills and CDS have presented a plan to legislature that would look to reform services for students ages three and four, looking for public schools to take on case management services of three- and four-year-olds. That does not mean that local school departments would be required for educating all three- and four-year-olds or opening programs to service all of those students. It would be a reform service to have us case-manage students with disabilities of that age group. The current proposal asks for a three-year commitment, one-third of school districts starting in the fall, and then another third the year later, and then the final third. I did not sign on for the Ellsworth School Department to be a part of Year One. I felt like that was too much, too fast. When we're still even in these early learning collaborative discussions, I feel like that's something that needs to have a year to discuss and really talk about how we're going to build that. One of the biggest concerns that superintendents have has nothing to do with philosophical concerns. Philosophically, we're the only state in the nation not doing this. We are woefully behind in terms of research and doing this. So it's not a philosophical issue. It's a twofold issue. It's a funding issue. How long-term is this going to be funded? So it's not another unfunded mandate on the backs of taxpayers. And then secondly, what are you going to do when you can't find workforce? And already, school departments cannot find teachers in the areas of special education. And as you know, one of the biggest workforce crises is in early learning centers and in pre-K. So you take those two shortages and you add this layer that is going to provide a problem for school departments. So that is not legislated yet. It is a recommendation, which is another reason why I didn't want to sign Ellsworth on. Legislature is going to have to rule, and then they'll have rulemaking. And by the time that all happens, as you know, it takes a while. By the time that all happens, our budget's going to have been approved and we'll be already planning for next year. So the timing just didn't make sense for us. We also were notified this past week that another one of our grants has been identified for monitoring status, the gift that keeps on giving, I call it. So our McKinney-Vento homeless grant is being highly monitored. And we have until the beginning of May to gather a lot of evidence regarding our management of that grant and our processes and procedures for how we handle that. I meet monthly with our district Guidance Counselors, Social Workers, and 504 Coordinators. And we looked at the document Friday, and they were a great resource. And we talked about, "These are the things we have. Let's pull this together. These are the things we don't have that could be improved upon." So it really ended up being a good exercise, and I think will help us identify some efficiencies moving forward. Last but not least, it is that time of year that we have had several teachers be nominated for Hancock County Teacher of the Year. And I'd like to announce them. We were very fortunate that we have teachers that were nominated from all three schools. These have to be K-12 teachers. And again, I want to remind people that this does not mean that all of our teachers are not worthy of this. But for this particular year, these people have been honored as nominated. And then now, they have until Monday, February 26th, to decide if they want to move further along in the process. The process is quite arduous. It is intense. And some people say, "Thank you for nominating," and choose not to put themselves through the process, and then others, people will. And then we'll learn who our finalists are at this point. But I did want to acknowledge those staff nominated for Hancock County Teacher of the Year. At Hancock County Technical Center, Michelle Cody and Tara Mason. Ellsworth Elementary Middle School, Becky Anderson. Alexis Chapman, Andrew Ford. Rebecca Hat, Mary Lowell, and Molly Shipman. And at Ellsworth High School, Jessie Felibella and Ryan Lowell. So I want to congratulate all of those teachers that were nominated for Teacher of the Year. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question about the first item in your report, the revolving.
Yes.
The loan part of it, what's the term of that loan?
It's 0%.
Right.
10 years.
10 years, okay. So it's just over $900,000. So it's like $90,000 a year that we've been paying back.
Yes. At 0%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a nice loan.
Yes.
And another $900,000 that is a grant.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, this is a big deal. It's a huge deal. And superintendents called and were like, "This is a huge coup. Good job." Like, this is the kind of stuff that our district needs to help us move forward with our facilities. Because as we'll discuss later in the budget, we have got to continue working on our facilities. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. And so acquiring funding like this is super important for us and for our taxpayers.
It's a $1,900,000, you know, ease on our taxpayers. That's...
Absolutely.
That comes around only after a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Amy, I have a question regarding the three-to-five-year-olds. So if we provide case management, that doesn't necessarily mean those children need to come into our schools to receive services, but we have to manage, and it may be at local hospitals or...
Correct. Correct. It would just be case management. Now, having said that, schools are probably going to look at a model that if a student is attending your preschool within your school, it would make sense to embed them, if there is room, within the service providers that you may have in your school department already. Because as you know, if you catch things early and you do those things and you embed those relationships, the chances of them losing those services or not needing them anymore is greatly increased. But no, it does not put the burden of all of the services on our backs. We would be responsible for ensuring that the child receives the least restrictive environment, and we would case-manage that. Where that least restrictive environment is, is a partnership with the family to determine. It could be that it's at a different early learning center. It doesn't have to be within our school. It would be the case management.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. That brings us to Item G, Committee Reports. I heard Finance had a long day yesterday.
It was awesome. Have we left?
So, yeah. Bev and I are both on, we're on Finance and we're also on Facilities. So we started yesterday morning at 8:30 with Facilities. But that was also kind of Facilities and Finance together, really, and talked about. And then that was followed by a series of meetings with department heads where they presented a draft budget and outlined their needs and wants and acknowledged in every case that some of these items are not going to make it into the final budget. But it's good to start out with a healthy, robust discussion about what would we do if we could do everything that we wanted and needed to do? So those budget drafts are going to get pared down in the next couple of weeks. And we're going to be meeting again on March 4th, you think?
Yes.
Yeah. And the goal is to complete our budget and vote on it at our March School Board Meeting, a month from today. And then it will go to the Council.
In early April is the hope.
Yeah. So that's where we're at. Anything you want to add?
Bev, do you want to report out on curriculum?
Yes. So to make Amy's day even longer, we also met for curriculum last night with Amy and Nikki. And we had some really great conversation. We had... We were presented with those packets that we got on aligning ELA. And just, I will say that I was also at the Strategic Planning Committee meeting, which was amazing, this activity that Amy has put together. It's, I left that meeting feeling very excited about the future of our district, and it was really very enjoyable. But also, in that meeting, there were so many people who were talking about the summer work that was done on this ELA alignment and the packets that were put together, and how much they're looking forward to doing that for other areas. So again, I left last night's meeting feeling very excited about what this means for our district because this is a lot of really hard work that's being done efficiently, not fast, but efficient, so that we're able to put those things into practice. And it's making our staff very excited too, which is awesome. So.
Thank you. So Policy did not have a chance to meet this month. Quickly, I'll report out on personnel. We have begun negotiations with our bus drivers and custodians. And we are soon to start negotiations with ed techs and administrative assistants. And does anyone have anything they want to report out on any committees? They are liaison to the Board for Wellness, Drop-Out Prevention.
We will be meeting, I think, in the next week or so for Wellness.
Okay, great.
I went to Drop-Out Prevention, and our next meeting's going to be actually March 4th also. It was good. Like, it was really very good discussion. Like, I left with lots of like, huh, you know, like, there's much more need than any of us would ever realize for children, which is disheartening, you know, to me. But yet, when I left, I also was like, "We have really good things in place and coming down the pike to like help those students out." So I'm actually really interested in this and looking forward. Sorry, I'm like cracky about this because I, it's, I think this is a hard one. Like, Drop-Out Prevention is, a lot of it is based on need. You know what I mean? Like, it really does come down to that. And I think that that's really unfortunate, and I think we all need to sort of wrap our heads around that. But I felt leaving good, really good with that. And I hope we all come together as a community and help these children out and make them better citizens and want to stay here and live and grow.
Amy would be perfect for that committee.
See, no, I'm not. Because I just get too emotional about things like that. But I mean, I, people really have no idea. And for years, this has been kind of a big one. I mean, years and years ago, when I first started like getting donations for the food pantries and stuff, people were like, "There's food pantries at the high school?" Yeah, there's a food pantry at the high school. Like, that's, that's a really hard one to swallow. Like, people just don't understand that, you know, we have like loaves and fishes and all the other ones. But like, to actually feel that students like don't have enough food and/or security at home, like, people just really take that for granted.
Absolutely.
And if folks want to donate to the food pantry or anything else, where, who should they reach out to?
I would call the main office. All three schools.
All three schools.
Have food pantries and accept clothing donations, winter jackets.
Toiletries.
Toiletries are a huge need. You could call the main office at any of our schools, and our Guidance Counselors and Social Workers would certainly help with that.
It's hard to learn when you're starving.
Absolutely.
Going home to a dark no-house or no-house.
Absolutely.
All right. That brings us to Item H, Public Participation. Seeing none, we will move on to New Business. Mrs. Bowles?
So first, we have our High Five Awards. This is a highlight of the Board every year. This month, it is Abby's turn to present the awards. And tonight, we have two. Our third recipient was not able to attend tonight. So we're going to start with our first recipient, who is a member of our Finance Team in Central Office. She is patient and prompt with all requests that come in from our schools, specifically in regards to grants. This staff member wrote, "She works tirelessly with us on a monthly basis to ensure that we have our grant balances correct and helps us work through errors at all times when found. Her diligence and efforts make a large impact in the smoothness of submitting our expense reports to our grant coach. She demonstrates excellence in the categories of motivation, excellence on the job, and integrity. She is detail-oriented and a problem solver. She consistently communicates openly and honestly and has shown us all great patience when we have been faced with challenges." And of course, I rely on her heavily in Central Office for all of our financial and budget needs. So I'd like to congratulate Amy Atherton. Next, we would like to recognize our newly hired Director of Technology. In her time here in the Ellsworth School Department, in her roles as our Technology Integrator, then our Interim Director of Technology, and now our IT Director, she has always excelled. She gives every situation her all, always going above and beyond to make sure teachers and students have what they need to be successful in the classroom and beyond. Last year, she ran the Girls Who Code Group, running three different groups to try to meet the needs and the interests of all the girls that had signed up. She did this all in her own time, above and beyond the demands of the job. She also runs the Robotics Program at Ellsworth High School. She is always looking for new ways to bring technology to our district in fun and unique ways, creating excitement for learning amongst her classes. Currently, for the last several weeks, she has been serving both roles as our IT Director and our Technology Integrator, doing so with grace and ease. Her level of dedication is amazing. And regardless of what she has on her plate, she always greets staff and students with a warm, welcome, nonjudgmental demeanor. And you know that you will always walk away having learned tools that will help you be successful. Congratulations to Katie Holland-Bach.
Congratulations to you both. Next, moving on with special presentations and feel-good stuff. Mr. Clifford, do you want to come up and talk about our guests here this evening?
Yes. So as you know, on Saturday, our cheering team won their second state championship in a row and second in schools' history. And this year, they swept everything. They won the Big East, they won the PVC, they won the Northern Maine Regional, and they won the state championship on Saturday. And I know some of you have been to those events. And I can never get over, you know, how stressful it is because they're always usually ranked number one, so you go last. And so I remember last year and this year at the Northern Maine and the state championship, they pretty much had to be perfect, and they were. And it was a great celebration, and the kids did really well. They have one senior on the team this year. And so, yeah, here is your state champion cheering for Class B. Come on up, girls. You'll just state your name and what class you're in.
Oh, yes, Whitney. Let's go.
Whitney, you're a cheerleader. You can do this.
You can do it.
Whitney Jordan, sophomore.
And then come right up front, honey.
Molly Smith, sophomore.
Kaylee Blockus, sophomore.
Grace Robinson, freshman.
Jewel Town, sophomore.
Callie Reese, junior.
Olivia Layton, junior.
Sage Bell, sophomore.
Katie Clark, freshman.
Lily Alley, sophomore.
Coaches.
Coaches can come on up and maybe say something.
I always appreciate Mr. Clifford introducing us because he truly does actually know the sport. Because he had a daughter that did it. So when he tells you that those moments of intensity, waiting to take the floor, they're real. You're sitting back, listening to the roar of every other team that performed. You're sitting back, listening to the roar of every other team that performs before you, and your stomach starts getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and then you realize like, we have to go do our job. And this group of athletes was amazing from the start, which both Kat and I would say we feared a little because we did not wanna peak too early. And we were jumping out in the beginning with a huge lead, and we thought, oh, we're gonna not be excited, we're gonna lose the um, energy of how hard we have to continue to work. But John Baps closed in on us real quick and we said, okay, let's dig in a little deeper. So um, it was a, it was a great year, but I'll let Kat say her piece.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, this year has been amazing for the team. We've had so much growth, we have such a young team, which is so great to see. Um, hopefully a couple of great years to come as well. Uh, but one thing I do wanna recognize is even after a big win, one of the most exciting parts is coming back to our community to celebrate. Like, do we, where do we wanna stop? We wanna stop somewhere quick so we can get right back to Ellsworth, so we can get right back to Ellsworth. So that community piece means more to these girls than anyone knows. So thank you to everybody who comes out and supports them because it's not an easy sport, but they truly appreciate it. Thank you all.
Also note, and I hope you guys know this, but all of you standing up here, you are part of a legacy and you, it should not be lost on you how many generations of coaches and athletes from a long time ago up until now are like, so proud of you. Number one, for doing it last year, but doing it again with a clean sweep. Like, it is, it's not just EHS right now, it's not just the people in the room. It is decades of cheerleaders and coaches that are so proud of you and your coaches who have also given a decade for coaching and just, you should be so, so proud because it's way bigger than I think you even probably realize right now. So congratulations.
Whitney, don't you wanna stay, honey?
No, you don't have to. You guys can all leave.
You guys have jackets already?
Last year.
Oh, last year?
How did that happen?
I do, I do wanna say though, before Melanie leaves. In case any of you don't know, we surprised her today. The Chamber Board of Directors surprised her today with the 2024 Chamber Business of the Year. I thought you were gonna say that you were gonna use some of that grant money. I mean, I love you. She just like, added on to HCTC and it can be the cheering gym. I'll take that under advisement. Alright. I'll bring it up to the committee. Okay, you get on that. Bye, guys, thank you.
Alright, number three, discussion.
We have one more special presentation.
Oh, we do?
We do. So Katie Hollenback is here and we have a presentation for our Teach With Tech Grant. Sunshine, are you coming up too?
Oh, that's cool.
We love show and tell.
It is a really big table.
It's harder to pass things across.
These are beautiful. These are cool.
Alright, so we just wanted to. Share, can you do that better?
That's perfect. We'll make that move.
Um, so we just wanted to share um, what we've been doing at Ellsworth with our um, the GlowForges that we got uh, as part of the 2023 MLTI Teach With Tech Grant. So we got two uh, Glowforge Pros. Um, and they look like this. Um, and it is a laser engraver and cutter. And uh, we have one at EMS and we actually moved one over to the high school recently. Um, and our maintenance um, made these lovely carts for us on wheels so they can move around the building in different places. Um, but it uh, also has a um, air filter um, as part of it, which can, on this cart, can fit right on the bottom. So it can be in any classroom, um, and it, the exhaust is all filtered through there. Um, you can use a variety of materials, is um, all enclosed and safe for students to use and to make lots of really cool stuff. And just a little video showing it, um, this is actually engraving on a leather belt, a leather, leather belt. Donuts, I believe, is what it is.
Donuts, I love it.
Uh, but this is uh.
Donuts on a belt, I think that's fantastic.
Uh, the top opens up the laser and you can, you put your materials in there. There's a little camera at the top, so um, in the, the interface for the machine, which is a web-based program, so we can use it on any device, you can use it on Chromebooks, iPads, or um, MacBooks, anything. Um, it has a little camera that shows the material that is laid in there and then you can place your design wherever you want on your material. And um, the interface is very user-friendly, um, and it's super easy to use for teachers and um, kinda like a giant cricket is the best way, I think I have to compare it, but you can do uh, cool stuff with it.
I want one now.
Uh, but you can do lots of different projects, use lots of different materials. Um, some of the things just that Sunshine has used at EMS so far are leather, um, wood, cardboard, um, acrylic, metal, um, and stone. Um, you can, the metal and stone, we can just engrave, we can't cut. Um, but you can make really cool designs, um, and with a variety of materials.
Here's the uh, the finished donut belt.
Yes, I love it.
He really, really loves it. After uh, after we got done engraving it, he decided he needed it colorized, so he sat and carefully painted each donut.
That's amazing.
And um, loved it very much. Uh, we've done some fun bracelets, there's earrings that we've done. And these are really cool puzzles.
That's amazing.
That's crazy.
Star there, um, and he left. I was running to, um, he was in here for her award, but um, her son Eli put that together after we cut it out. And um, we also have a fun airplane. We did the little bird, they're like ornaments, we did those with our life skills kids. And they love it.
Awesome.
And what I love about this particular aspect of the Glowforge is um, the opportunity to really make it a cross-curricular sort of opportunity to deepen the students' understanding of it. So like, when we used a pre, we found this design for this WASP online and we cut it out, but when he finished assembling it, we both felt like it needed some eyeballs. And so we had to research and find some eyeballs. And we were just doing an art project, but it became science. And when we were putting this together, we discussed like, the way that it could be used maybe for history and just all different kinds of applications. Um, we have, ooh, I just did that. We have, I hear we have um, a fourth grade teacher who's getting really excited about making all kinds of things on the Glowforge, right, for um, just interactive lessons. Uh, we've also been um, dumpster diving for things to put on the Glowforge. So that one over there is out of the newspaper and we were able to, I mean, it's so cool that this laser can um, etch into newspaper, such a fine substance, but then also, you know, rock. Um, and so that's newspaper, this is a piece of cardboard, and so it's just been kind of fun. Um, that one uh, with the music that's right in front of you, that's from a hundred-year-old hymnal that we just.
That is absolutely beautiful. I don't know who made that, but it's gorgeous.
Uh, so we're just, we're just having fun, just trying all the things to see what we can do. Um, what I really, really love about the Glowforge in my classroom is that it offers the opportunity to empower different types of learners. So like I told you before, we've even been able to use it on a bunch of different projects with the life skill kids. And I love to be able to give them something that they can take and I don't have to worry about if it's gonna break on them and, and they're just so excited to take their projects home. Um, we've used it with um, the Fresh Start Kids, who lots of them have kind of lost their passion for lots of things in education, but this has sort of made them excited about something again. And um, student athletes, this might be a shock to you, but they don't all love art, but um, this Glowforge has made some of them very excited about their self-portraits. Like, they can't wait to take them home and show them to their families. And so it's just um, exciting to be able to easily differentiate and find a way for all skill levels to participate. One thing that she didn't mention that the Glowforge can do is it scans. And so when we had our self-portrait assignment, one of the students wanted to draw herself. So these ones, we used photographs and then we manipulated them in different um, websites. She wanted to draw herself, but she wanted to use the Glowforge too. So she drew herself and then we're able to put it inside the Glowforge and then the camera will scan it. And so she was able to um, participate in the Glowforge experience as well. And I loved that she wanted to do that and did it that way.
What did you make?
Um, I made my own self-portrait using this Glowforge here, a very nice and very fun one.
What, what was the process?
So first, I got a piece of paper out of an old book and we used the Glowforge to create the outline, the star, as you see here, and I just painted the outside of it and created the background.
How do you feel about the finish product?
I think it's very nice, I think it's very creative, how the Glowforge created my own self-portrait and I'm very happy with the product.
That was not rehearsed, that was just him.
That was awesome. I know, it was adorable. With the little sharpie microphone to make it sound like it. I like it.
And I love her art. Wow, that was, that art is beautiful. Oh my gosh, and that's so pretty.
So um, at the beginning of the year, um, there was a speaker, Mark Brown came to the middle school and um, he talked about, his speech was about changing one life. Um, and so Sunshine wanted to do like, a collaborative project with students, so she came up, um, we talked about this a bunch and we, she came up with like, how can you change one life? So change one life by being something. And so students uh, designed their own hexagon. Um, some of them used online.
What did you make?
Not sure how we. It was good, it's nice to see it when it was. Um, we'll just mute that just in case. So.
It seemed like perfect timing, though, you were like, we had one person, what did you make?
Um, they used Canva to design their, their hexagons and you can kinda tell which ones those were. But then some kids just wanted to draw them by hand and so for those, we then used the scanning in um, the Glowforge to be able to just engrave their hand drawings. Uh, so it kinda reaches a variety of levels depending on what they want to do. And then some kids who um, yeah, were excited about hunting, they um, would not want to do anything of the art, but was really excited to show um, how you could be, um, change one life by being respectful um, when you're hunting. Um, yeah, so that's a kind of a ongoing project we're still working on.
We'll, we'll assemble it and um, cut out these to go with it, it's really nice.
Oh my gosh, that would be awesome.
And then just, these are just a couple of other projects um, that students have made with their self-portraits. And um, for the, uh, speaking of grants, there's another round of Teach With Tech Grant that's open. And so um, I, this year, last year, I felt like I was, we were kinda going big with this GlowForges, but then I heard what other schools have done.
Now you're going bigger.
So I'd like to um, yeah, kinda start talking with some teachers and wanna get a team of teachers together to see kind of what they're dreaming and um, want to see as far as tech goes in our school, so.
This is amazing. Really beautiful work. I love the tangible art, the wearable art.
Yeah, and, and the high school has started too, Ms. Olson, um, I threw it on her today, um, so it was a little too late for her to join, but she started um, testing out some things too, um, making some things that she could use to, like, for clay and to um, cut out her laser engraved things. Um, she's done rocks. She actually also engraved on clay that's been fired. And some earrings and glass too. Glass, she learned, uh, if you score it too much, it breaks.
So Katie, what kind of training do teachers need to utilize this? Like, have you just like, if a teacher shows interest, you just help them?
Yeah.
Is kind of the model?
Yeah, kind of the model that we've gone with so far, but I learned that um, in the grant, we can actually um, put in for funding for PD, to pay teachers um, to have professional development days. So that's something I would definitely want to do, looking forward.
So I love that this was paid for by a grant, but I'm just curious, what does this machine cost?
Um, the grant was like, eighteen thousand something for two, so around nine thousand, nine thousand dollars.
So if you want one at home, Kelly.
I'm not getting one.
They have another smaller model that they came out with since this, like, this one's kinda big and for our bigger classrooms it works, but they do have a smaller model that I was kind of looking at, like, could that be more user-friendly in a smaller, like, classroom? A little bigger than a cricket still, but.
So cool. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you, guys. These are awesome. Do you wanna, you hand from that end, and she'll hand from that end? What a good time to be a student in Ellsworth. My gosh, these are so fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's wonderful, the art takes so many.
Alright, now down to the work.
Yep, we got, you're up, number three.
So, as we spoke about, Katie has been doing double duty, but we are thrilled to announce that we do have a candidate um, that we brought to Personnel, that Personnel approved. Um, Patience Creach is who we would like to hire as our new technology integrator for a first-year probationary contract.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the superintendent's nomination of Patience Creach as technology integrator with a first-year probationary contract for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Was that you, Beth?
It was Abby. I motioned, Abby seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? Amy, would you like to touch upon her double role for a little bit?
Yes, so currently, Patience is our long-term sub in our Ellsworth High School science classroom. So, one of the things that impressed me the most about her, when I met with her, um, was she immediately said, I am not gonna leave these students high and dry for the remainder of the year. I'm finally in a groove with them, they're comfortable with me, I'm comfortable with them. So as much as I wanna dig right in and start this right away, I don't think I can do that. And so Dan and Katie worked together collaboratively with me and we agreed to a plan where she will continue in her science role. Um, we are going to give her, instead of attending some of the meetings that she would have to normally attend, that's when she will kind of do some work with Katie to start training for the job. Um, there are some days that we may get her a sub so that she can work as tech integrator once in a while on a Friday here and there.
so that she can work as tech integrator once in a while on a Friday here and there, where students already leave early. Um and then she will fully transition into this role this summer, um which is not to say that Katie doesn't need her right now, but as a district, it was most important that the students that she's servicing um have a teacher for the remainder of the year. Um so we're very grateful.
Statement to her character.
Yes.
To say, here's this opportunity I want to seize, but also this is really important.
Yes, and Dan and Katie were really good about working together to ensure that that um transition for students was gonna be okay and that Katie's department was okay. Um it was certainly not optimal, but with the situation that we have right now, it is what is best.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you much. Number four, second read of policies.
So last month, we had several policies we brought forward. The first two were policies that we already had in place that were simply amended. So looking for um approval for the second read of policies BE, school board meetings, and CBI, supervision and evaluation of the superintendent.
A motion?
I'll make it. Um I recommend the motion to accept the second read of amended policies BE, school board meetings, and CBI, supervision and evaluation of superintendent as presented and recommended by policy committee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Be.
And then we have a list. If you recall, um we are working to update sections of our policy manual. The list before you are new policies for our school department to help round out section C of the policy manual. These were presented for first read last month and are before you tonight for second read.
A motion?
I will make a motion to accept the second read and adopt the policies, can I just say listed below? There's so many of them. Um as presented and recommended by the policy committee. Just, there's nine of them, so that's why.
Discussion and just to be clear, Amy, there were no changes to these policies from the first read?
No.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Number five, discussion and consideration of overnight trips.
So the first trip before you is an overnight trip to Camp Wavis in Jefferson, Maine for the two thousand twenty-four Rainbow Ball. I don't know if Carrie has, wants to answer any questions. You did have that in the board packet that Teresa emailed you. This is a trip that we have taken before very successfully. But Carrie is here in case any of you have any specific questions about the trip.
I don't have any specific questions, but as always, thank you for taking your time, your own time, to do this for kids.
Thank you. It's really a great trip. Um and there is professional development for teachers. When the kids are doing their activities on Saturday, they offer us free hours of development on a variety of topics, so it's really kind of a bonus for me. That's great. Yeah, the kids love it. They're really excited.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the overnight trip to Camp Wavis in Jefferson, Maine for the two thousand twenty-four Rainbow Ball as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Have a wonderful trip.
Yes, it'll be awesome. Thank you so much. I don't think I've ever said so few words in front of a microphone in my whole entire life, so this is.
Good job, Mr. Tracy.
Um you also had information in your packet. This is another annual trip that we do each year for Skills USA, um the overnight to Bangor. So Mr. Tracy's here, if you have any questions.
Bring home the gold, no?
So exciting. Are we gonna see you on a rooftop again, hopefully?
Uh I don't know about that, but we're excited to get, I'm ninety-one students there. That's really, that's huge.
That's a huge number.
How many students are at HCTC?
About two hundred and forty-two right now.
So that's a huge percentage.
We're actually the second biggest center in the state. Um the first one is a much, much larger school. So it's really exciting to have that commitment from our staff and our students, because it takes the entire village to do this.
And ninety-one students out of like two hundred and forty, fifty, that's a huge percentage.
Third of the students are coming.
And this is about a, uh just over a month from now, right?
Yep, so March fourteenth and fifteenth, uh we'll head up kind of in, in waves. We have our um courtesy corps and our officers going in the morning and then the rest of our students go up after school on Thursday. And then uh overnight Thursday, I think, and Friday when they, again, go in waves and competing at like six AM to eight AM and through, through the day, so. Should be an exciting trip.
I will make a motion to approve the overnight trip to Skills USA State Championship in Bangor, Maine as presented.
May I second that?
Oh, Beth already, she beat you to it.
She needs to speak up.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um next we are asking the board to formally acknowledge two donations. The first is a donation from Franklin Savings Bank. Um the Ellsworth School Department was selected to receive a donation of two thousand dollars from Franklin Savings Bank to help support our school's food security efforts. So we would like to take this time to formally acknowledge and thank Franklin Savings Bank and have the board formally accept this donation.
I move to acknowledge the donation from Franklin Savings Bank to the Ellsworth School Department to help support our school's food security efforts.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think it's really amazing that you were just kind of mentioning this program and how important it is and then to have this be on the agenda seems very, very fitting and very exciting. Good job Franklin Savings Bank.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, absolutely.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Next, we'd also like to formally acknowledge, uh you may have seen this on the news, um the trailer that Hancock County Technical Center received, it's kind of a cool story. Um and formally acknowledge the donation from K and B Auto Nitro Trailer and E L Shay.
I will make a motion to acknowledge the donation of an enclosed trailer from K and B Automotive, Nitro Trailer and E L Shay to the Hancock County Technical Center.
Second that motion? Thank you, Abby. Any discussion?
Just a huge thank you.
We had a trailer at HCTC, but it wasn't roadworthy, right?
Correct.
And um you can't do a lot with a trailer that you can't take on the roll, the road, other than.
Yeah. For Skills USA, it's a huge need to bring all the competition equipment.
Right.
Maybe you can sleep in there this year. Yes.
They're already talking about it, so whatever works.
And these, and these three businesses, uh two of them, one, one of them supplied the trailer and, and sold it at cost and the other two purchased it.
That's amazing.
That is really wonderful.
Pretty great.
It's beautiful.
It's awesome. All those in favor? Thank you, and a huge thank you to them.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, item seven.
It's that time of year again that we start looking at the draft school calendar, which you have in your blue folders. So to just talk through, this is pretty much a replication of this current school year's calendar. Um it provides for the Monday, August nineteenth, to be a new staff orientation day. So any new people that we hire would work on Monday, August nineteenth. And then on Tuesday, the twentieth, would be just new teachers. Um that was something that was talked a lot about in teacher negotiations last year. Then the following Monday and Tuesday, August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, would be our opening professional development workshop days, followed by the first student day being Wednesday, August twenty-ninth. If you recall. Twenty-eighth, yes, thank you. If you recall, last year, the biggest change we made in our calendar was we went from a hundred and seventy-seven student days to a hundred and seventy-five, which shifted those two days to professional development days for our staff. We did that because of the vast amount of work that we are asking of our teachers and the need for them to have that additional time to do that. So you will see again that we have a professional development day in October, which is coupled up for families with the long holiday weekend. We have our day's Thanksgiving break. Then we have our day in March with coincides with Skills USA, which is what most districts do around the state, and coincides with PREP, the professional development organization that we are a part of. And then we allow for one professional day at the end of the school year to end the year. This calendar builds in four storm days. It does continue to have PLCs on Friday. And what people always ask is what is the holiday break look like, and it's a long one this year because of the way that Christmas falls on a Wednesday. So it is a full week and then three days the following week. So it's that year that it's one of the longest that we will have. Um at this point, what we will do is this has been sent to the union um for their approval. Leadership team has looked at this and so we will spend the next few weeks gathering feedback. If there are any changes um based on the feedback, we will bring them to you, but we will be looking for formal adoption of this calendar in March. Um what I will say, this is tightly aligned with the school, other school departments in Hancock County. As you know, there is state law that we have to have less than five dissimilar days from all of the sending districts that send to the Career and Technical Center. So for us, all sending high schools that send to HCTC have to be in alignment. This calendar accomplishes that. So if we were to make any changes, it's a bigger discussion than just us. Um but this, this is pretty, pretty tight as it is thus far. It does have June sixth being high school graduation next year, with the last student day with four days built in as June sixteenth and the last teacher day being June seventeenth. So if you look at it and then you want to provide any feedback, please just send me an email. And then that'll be put with all of staff feedback that I receive over the next couple of weeks and we'll look for formal approval in March.
Perfect. Thank you, Amy. All right, that brings us to budget update.
The budget. Was a great day yesterday with our finance committee. Um our department heads and school leaders spent the day um talking about staffing, programming changes, um increases, decreases. As Paul said, it was the first go of our budget. But what I think is important tonight is to outline for the community some of the goals that we hope the FY twenty-five budget accomplish, but then also talk about what are some of the challenges that we will face. So first, one of the goals that we look to achieve in the FY twenty-five budget is equity. One of the things that I have quickly learned um in my time is that we had really inequitable processes in place throughout the budgeting process. Individual teachers would put in supply requests and some would always be very miniscule in what they would ask for and hardly ask for anything and then others would ask for a lot of things. And that's not to say one was better than the other, but it did provide for inequitable circumstances, both for our staff but also for students that are in these classrooms. So we did a lot of research and looked at what were practices in other school departments and most other school departments provide staff with a flat amount. They don't have to build shopping carts in December when they're already busy and trying to focus on getting students ready for the holiday break. They themselves have their own family obligations and they don't really know in December what they need for the fall at that time. You don't know how many supplies you're gonna use, what you're gonna have left. So providing every teacher with a flat amount for classroom supplies took a load off the plate. The other piece of equity that this budget looked at was the work that Nikki Chan did with Katie Hollenback and Building Administrators. They really spent a ton of time and had papers everywhere um looking at what are the curriculum instructional supplies? What are the technology resources that all students should have per grade level by content area that provides equity for access to education and learning? And what we quickly realized is teachers have always worked really, really hard, but there's been no consistency across even grade levels and/or departments with curriculum instructional supplies and technological resources. Um which inadvertently sets up he versus she, us versus them, like the classroom lottery model, and we don't want that. No matter who you have for a classroom teacher, we want all students to have access to the same curriculum and instructional um supplies. So we really look to streamline what do tier one curriculum resources and teaching resources look like, no matter what, across the district? And this really kind of provided us with a baseline and an inventory of what we have for every content area, what we feel like good decisions are for tier one in the MTS system. And that's gonna help us build the academic framework for tier one for all kids. Then what that does is helps us really look at what curriculum resources do we need to have for the tier two students that need a little more support. And so that provides us with a little more equity in our budgeting for these things, but also in a variety of other areas. Um so this was a really important change for us. I also feel like it took the load off of our building administrators and our teachers and/or department heads to try to craft what some of these budgets would look like. It's gonna streamline ordering practices across the district for these things. It's just gonna help in a variety of ways. So that was one of our big goals in this budget. Second, we're really working on careful planning. So for example, IT, Katie is really working on what are the needs over the next five years in technology? Because we have spent a lot of money on technology district-wide, but there's been no plan for, okay, this lease runs out in four or five years. This group of iPads or this group of Chromebooks need to be replaced. It's really hard to budget that way. There have to be plans in place and rotations in place, not just in IT, but in facilities, in our furniture and classrooms. What does the instructional model look like for technology in different types of classrooms? And really start to put together five-year and ten-year plans for these kinds of things so that we're very carefully budgeting these things and there's no like surprise. There's all these things that are due. If we have a plan, we're gonna be able to really look at that and spell that out for taxpayers and the board moving forward. The third goal, we've talked a lot about this. The school department has been called upon to help with the pre-K issue in the city of Ellsworth. So one of the goals of this budget has been to work on how can we help provide a service to our community that doesn't take away from organizations and establishments that are already in existence? We know they're at capacity, we know they're overloaded. So how can the FY twenty-five budget help us accomplish the goal of providing some sort of public pre-K service to students in our community next year? Our fourth goal in this budget is to value our people. So we worked really hard last year in negotiations to have competitive contracts for our teachers and our specialists. And this year we have four other contracts that we're looking to negotiate and really show appreciation and support for those classifications of people. But at the same time, our administrators, our other workers who aren't covered under collective bargaining agreements, what are some ways in which we can value our people and stay competitive so that we can recruit and retain the high-quality people that we have? In addition, leadership worked really hard this past year. Our stipend chart has not been updated in years. And we were kind of befuddled to learn that a lot of our stipends were some of the lowest in Hancock County. Um and so we did a lot of work to try to get that up. It's maybe not where we want it to be yet, but hope to over the next couple of years bring us to a place where our stipends are more competitive um with other area schools. So really hoping that our budgets the last couple of years show our value in our people across all levels. The fifth goal of this budget is to educate the whole. The fifth goal of this budget is to educate the whole student and to help support all students. We look to improve upon our social, emotional and behavioral supports for our students. Our district needs have greatly increased in these areas over the last couple of years. Students and families are increasingly complex and more and more, the community looks to schools to help provide services for students and families that are in need. We need to expand our programming to reach different types of learners and build in additional supports for those students that are struggling. We have an exceptional adult education program, offer alternative ed, career and technical education and JMG for students at the high school level. Long-term, we hope to build upon these strengths to offer more opportunities for students and to expand some of these programs into lower grades. So those are our five overarching big goals of the FY25 budget. And coming with those goals, there are five challenges that I see facing us in this budget. The first, unfunded mandates from the state. I'm not sure people are aware, but the new paid family and medical leave program goes into effect in January of 2025. This requires employers to pay a half a percent of their employee payroll to paid family and medical leave for their employees. Districts have been told to budget 1% of their payroll as there is stipulation in the law that allows employees to negotiate a portion of that 1% that they are responsible for, for up to half. On top of what they contribute to paid family and medical leave, districts are highly concerned about the growing costs of hiring substitutes for employees that are on extended leave during times in which substitutes are already extremely difficult to find. The new law gives employees the option of taking up to 12 weeks of paid time off and they can take that time to take care of people who are not direct family, but have a familial relationship. There are several other bills currently being discussed in the legislation that would come at a huge cost to local districts that would be unfunded mandates. So one of the things that superintendents are really trying to stay on top of is those legislations and when there's active hearings, Hancock County superintendents are talking and trying to actively participate in some of these discussions to talk about how legislators sometimes have really great ideas, but the boots on the ground and then the impact that it rolls down onto school districts and to taxpayers has to be taken into account. The new paid family and medical leave program is at an estimated cost of over $6 million to school districts across the state of Maine for next year. That's for a half of a year of this law. So I, I want people to understand that right out of the gate, 1% of all payroll is in our budget for this new law. Carryforward, for those that know, we froze our FY24 budget back in January, as explained during our last budget cycle last year. We are in the position, we took a lot of money over the last several years and put a lot of carryforward towards our budget to reduce taxpayer contribution. And so we are still trying to play catch-up from that and trying to have a healthy balance forward that is fiscally responsible for our taxpayers and helps build up reserves for emergency situations. Number three, facilities. We talked about this earlier. Facilities projects have been put on hold for so long that we are now vastly behind in paying catch-up at a time when costs of doing major facility renovations and upgrades are very expensive. We have to make this a priority long-term as keeping our students and staff safe in our facilities is of utmost importance. So we do have, we're in a situation where we have so much facility work that needs to be done that is going to be costly. And so as we discussed, we are trying to find cost-effective ways to do those things, but we are at a position in several projects, especially at Ellsworth High School, we cannot continue to kick the can down the road and just keep putting things off. Things are getting worse. Another challenge, it's also an opportunity, but it is a challenge, is increasingly complex student issues. Students and families are ever-changing and coming to us with a completely different set of needs than they once did. We are seeing an increase in students requiring 504 services and special education services. We have an increase in students identified as economically disadvantaged and we have a huge uptick in multilingual students. These are all wonderful things that I think make our school system diverse and wonderful, but they do come with challenges and they do come with very different needs that we have to provide for in our school department. Loss of COVID grant funding, I would couple with some of this stuff as Nikki talked about. All of our ESAR and COVID money expires September 30th. We will spend every dime, we will not give a cent back, but that COVID funding has provided school systems with incredible cash flow that school systems have always known they would not be able to sustain. We have several really crucial positions that are currently in ESAR funding that we're going to look to try to build into our new budget for FY25 that would put them in the local budget. So trying to explore what, what do we absolutely need moving forward and how can we absorb those without an increase to taxpayers? Last but not least, and I think this is important to really talk about as a challenge, is a decreased workforce in education. Coupled with all of these problems, educators are faced with the decreasing number of educators that are entering the teaching workforce. Districts are challenged to find ways to recruit people into the world of education in an ever-complex and political time. The days of having multiple applications for administrative and teaching positions are no longer what school districts are seeing. It used to be that you'd have an opening for, let's say, high school social studies and you might get 30 applicants. We're lucky now if we get five. And that is not just an Ellsworth problem, that is a statewide and national problem. We continue this year to have vacancies in our schools for teaching positions that have gone unfilled for this entire school year. And essentially, one of the hardest areas, people are not looking to take early learning teaching positions in our pre-K and our youngest children. People are not looking to get into special education and applicants in administrative positions at our even post-secondary schools are dwindling. So schools are going to be faced with how do you fill positions and openings with high-quality people long-term, especially your teachers that are your boots on the ground in classrooms? So that's going to be a challenge for us moving forward is filling the workforce. Last but not least, our timeline is tight. We, as I said, had the all-day budget workshop yesterday. I am presenting to city council Friday morning at their finance meeting for the first time to kind of start laying the groundwork for what our budget for FY25 is going to look like. City council was a great partner with us last year in this process and have been keeping in touch this year about this. So I look forward to talking to them on Friday. During the weeks of February vacation and the week of February 26th, we will be finalizing department and school budgets. Monday, March 4th will be the next time that our finance committee sees an updated budget. If needed, we will meet again on Monday, March 11th with the goal to have the school board vote on our budget on March 12th. Again, that is a really tight timeline. I'm going to be very interested to see if the city is going to be ready to vote on our budget in April. The reason for the uptick in the timeline has been because of the new balloting process. In order for us to get our budget on the ballot in that June vote, we have to have this approved in April. Otherwise, we'll be kicking the can down the road in the summer and nobody wants to do that again like we did last year. It's too late, it's stressful, it's hard on our staff, it's hard on our people. So really...
And it costs the city money.
Yes.
But part of the reason of not having it ready last year was actually the city.
Correct.
It wasn't us.
Correct.
Let's make that noted.
Correct. So the hope is that everything will be in play so that we can have this approved in March, meet our timeline and then move forward with full city council presentation in April. Questions?
Speaking of the budget in the city council, the city council, have they reached out with any questions they have about the budget? I know, you know, things tend to be done in the reverse where we're bringing stuff to them and then they have all these questions and then these, you know, the things got delayed last year. So, you know, in light of that, are they making plans by getting their questions out early to us?
They, they have been very responsive. Even though I haven't formally presented to finance yet, Glenn and I are in communication almost every other week, if not weekly, about different things going on. The one thing that I have really liked this year that I won't talk about in detail yet, but Glenn, Matt Williams and Jana Richards have worked really hard to bring me in on conversations regarding grant funding efficiencies between the school and the city and ways we could provide services together that would save taxpayers money. They're really being forward-thinking about those kinds of things and asking those kinds of questions now so that we can make those changes in our budget. When they brought FEMA in, I thought that was a great example of the city manager calling and saying, Amy, come to this meeting right now, this will help you. So I feel really good about how much collaboration has increased between the city manager, not just the city manager and city council, but even some of his department heads and the work they do with us. Even something as simple as snow days, talking to the highway guys at 4:00 AM, love talking to Adam at 4:00 AM, those kinds of things have really improved communication and collaboration. So there shouldn't be any surprises.
Right, but we also have new counselors. We have new counselors and...
We could have a new city manager.
Right, and I do feel like, I'm putting this out there now, I know we have questions. I'm sure they want to dig in. This is the time.
Absolutely.
Not the day that we need to vote.
Absolutely.
And then they can't vote because there's too many outstanding questions. This is a time we're all available. If somebody needs a tour of the school, reach out to me, I'm happy to oblige. I want every question answered.
Ahead of time.
Ahead of time. And I'm giving them every opportunity to do so.
Yep, and I think that, you know, Tammy is the chair of the finance committee, Tammy Moat. I think that that's part of why they have me scheduled for the next few Fridays is to help them update. That's, I think, new membership on finance. Some of our new counselors, I believe, are on there. So I think that will be good. Having Tammy sit on our strategic planning committee has been really good because she has been in on the ground, talking about and hearing people talk about our needs and things that we need to move forward. So I think parts and pieces are in place. Like you said, I think there is the acknowledgement, they know that if they reach out to any of us, that they can get their questions answered. So Friday will be good, we'll get a temperature check. I will do, they've asked me to do like what I've done in the past, I will certainly talk about these things with them, but I will also talk to them about some of our data. What's our enrollment? Where are we at with our percentages of different subgroups? It helps paint a picture of the district and so we'll do that on Friday as well.
That was great, what you did last year.
Yeah, and they, they would like that done again. So that's what I'll be doing on Friday.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you, Amy. That brings us to number nine, discussion and consideration of the superintendent contract. However, it looks like we'll probably go into executive session. Should I, so I'll just do the calendar and announcements so folks can leave and not come back. Curriculum is to be determined, personnel will meet on February 29th, they'll meet again on March 4th, policy will meet on March 1st, facilities will meet March 11th, finance March 4th. Our next regular school board meeting will be Tuesday, March 12th, and our next board workshop will be Tuesday, March 26th here in council chambers.
So we don't have a February workshop?
We do not.
Because a lot of people are gone.
Short month of vacation.
Yep.
Makes sense. So I have a question. If we go into executive session, are we going to be taking action after the executive session? So will we have to come out and do a vote of any sort? I don't see...
On the superintendents.
Yeah, I don't think so. I just see discussion, but I just...
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. So if people are watching online, we will have to come out to vote to adjourn, but there won't be any other...
Action.
Action taken.
Exactly. Y'all can leave if you like, or you can stay.
But you can't stay in here.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion?
We do.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session per one MRSA 4056A to discuss the, to discuss superintendent contract.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Hi, Carrie, thanks for coming.
Bye, Carrie, thanks for coming.